So tonight, uh, we wanted to focus the town hall on housing. Um, of course, as you guys know, regularly move this. Uh, town hall meeting, have it every month throughout the first district and go from one neighborhood. Uh, to the next last month, we were in SoCal Village. Um, and I usually focus on specific issues relative to those specific parts of the district. But uh, now it's kind of a special time for housing because we're in the middle of. Uh, our housing element update process. Uh, which I'll explain more about um, and a draft is now available for everyone to comment on. Um, it was released about, um, well, I guess there's about ten days left, probably, right, Stephanie? Or maybe a little bit less even at this point.
Uh, yeah, the public comments are due on July eleventh.
Okay, okay, for July eleventh, and then I'm sorry, I didn't introduce uh, Stephanie Hansen, who is here with us, the assistant. Planning director. And uh, she is leading this process of the housing element update, so she is uh, our expert. Uh, tonight and always uh, when it comes to housing policy. So I'll just jump right in. Um, do you have a bit of a? You know, I guess this is a preview, just to make sure as as we wait for everyone to get in, this is, you know, you go to the movies, you have. Some some previews of other things that are happening going on around the district, so this is the one non-housing uh. Element item I'll talk about, which is that. Um, the county, we did just approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget. Uh, for. Uh, for the entire county, um, and I'm happy to say that we included funding for a new place structure at Floral Park in that budget. So, uh, or as you can see Floral Park, it's it's over in the Pleasure Point area, it's close to East Cliff. Um, so you probably, if you go to East Cliff, walk nearby it all the time. Um, it's also in an area that is uh, close to really a wide variety of folks of different incomes. Um. And uh, this has this place structure that. Clearly, as you can see from this top photo, is in in bad need of replacement, um, and so. Uh, we have, it was actually started as a community fundraising effort to fix this up. Um, and so the neighborhood worked with Santa Cruz um, County Park Friends. And raised over three hundred thousand dollars to improve this park. Um, hard to believe it costs so much for a place structure, they actually, the three hundred thousand dollars wasn't enough. Um, and so. We needed another, we had another hundred thousand dollars of public funding to get us all the way to the full cost of replacing this place structure, putting in a rubberized surface. Um, underneath, um, so that it's just a little bit more modern and open and accessible to different age groups. Um. And I'm happy to say that the way we were able to do that uh, was. That um, but as voters, you may remember, we increased the transient occupancy taxes uh, lot. Last year, that's the tax on short-term rentals like Airbnbs or VRBOs. Um. We increased it a little bit for hotels too, but more for vacation rentals. Uh, and in doing that, we also uh, wanted to make sure that. Some of that money goes back to the areas that are most impacted by vacation rentals. Um, and obviously Pleasure Point uh, is one such area, and so this was a natural recipient of uh, some of those funds. Um, we'll be on the lookout for more such projects in next year's budget. Um, in fact, some are already being suggested, so um, if you have any ideas. Feel free to send them to our office, first dot district at Santa Cruz County dot U S. Okay. So now let's get on to housing. Um, and if you read the Sentinel, you may have seen the news today, um, that Santa Cruz County is now the most. Expensive metro area in the entire United States. Number one, uh, it's it's sort of an ignominious title to have, uh, last year, we were the second most expensive. Uh, but now we have in fact surpassed San Francisco. Um, and what you're seeing here in this graph is basically the wage that you need to make. In order to have uh, the a rental, the average cost rental be of what's considered affordable, so thirty percent of your income or less. That's your gross income too. Um, so basically you need to make, I think it's about sixty-three dollars here in Santa Cruz County in order to afford um, the average rental. And Stephanie will have to look at exactly how they calculated that, because I know that uh, I've seen some numbers in. Uh, uh, elsewhere that showed being a little bit lower, but maybe that's average. Current price people are paying for a rental versus what's on the market today. Um, in any case, it's expensive out there. Um, of, and then this is actually really not being felt by everyone in the same way, though, throughout the community. Um, so this shows the basically the huge discrepancy that exists between home homeowners and renters. Uh, when it comes to how much of our incomes we allocate towards housing. Um, so you can see if. If you own your home, about. You know, sixty-nine percent of people are paying less than thirty percent of their income, and that's, that basically means that um, you know, housing feels more or less affordable to you. Um, some people uh. Who own their home are certainly paying more, but you know, it's more like twenty-five percent. When you look at renter occupied homes. Uh. More than fifty percent are paying. Uh, more than thirty percent of their income, and in fact, thirty percent are paying more than half of all of their income towards rent. And again, that's gross income, so really, it's. It's not fifty percent of your take-home pay, it's fifty percent of, you know, everything you make before taxes, so. The percent is really a lot, and that's why it's called rent burdened. If uh, if you make even more, if you have to spend even more than just thirty percent of your income. On rent. So, you know, but if you're, if you're in this owner occupied group, especially if you're in this sixty-nine percent, you might be wondering, well. Why does it matter to me? I mean, my home. Value is great, um, you know, I'm relatively comfortable, I love the way Santa Cruz is today, um, what's the problem? Well, the problem is uh, we need workers. And largely, this problem of expensive housing, it is disproportionately felt throughout our economy, and. A lot of the jobs in Santa Cruz County are in fact. Uh, these tier-three jobs, which basically means uh, low-wage jobs. Santa Cruz is, these two biggest industries are agriculture and tourism. And both of those have a lot of seasonal jobs and a lot of. Uh, relatively low-paying jobs. Um, this graph is, this is from the Workforce Development Board, and so it's showing you Santa Cruz County in blue compared to statewide uh, average in. Yellow, and you can see, we do have a few less of the high-paying tier-one jobs than the state does on average. Two-two or sort of middle income, a little bit less there and a little bit more on the tier-three. Um, the other thing is that Santa Cruz County has a lower labor force participation rate. Than the rest of California. Um. So. Yeah, that means that less people work here in our county than in other communities, just fifty-nine percent. Uh, people work here, who live in Santa Cruz County, work in Santa Cruz County. Um, and there's a couple of reasons for that, um, one, this doesn't count folks who work over the hill. If they're employed in Santa Clara County, they show up as, they don't show up in these numbers as, according to our local employment stats. Um, it also doesn't count folks who are retired, obviously, if you're retired, used to work in Santa Cruz County, but are now retired. Uh, you're no longer participating in the workforce. And so, uh, you're just actually during the pandemic. We went from about a hundred and sixteen thousand jobs countywide down to a hundred and fourteen thousand. And uh, so there's a net loss of two thousand jobs. I'm talking to the Workforce Development Board folks, they think it's, it's not that. There's no longer work to be done, it's just that those two thousand jobs can't be filled. Uh, a lot of folks took the opportunity of the pandemic to just retire, and said it's just. Don't want to do this anymore. Um, in some cases, folks moved to more affordable communities. Uh, in order to, you know, raise a family somewhere else where they could have more space. Um. And uh, we're still, still trying to get those jobs. You know, still trying to fill those jobs. And I would say. Uh, there's, we really feel this very acutely at the county. You know, I think I've mentioned before, but we have a lot of positions that are funded in our budget. But that we are having trouble filling. Um, you know, so one of. Uh, one such example is in. Uh, our mental health department, our behavioral health department. Thirty percent of all the jobs are vacant, meaning we're posting, trying to hire for them, but we haven't been able to fill them. Of course, that creates more stress for the people who are working in those positions, trying to do more, or have to do more work. Um, and. Um, it also means that the county is just not able to provide the same level of services we would like to as. As there is clearly need for in the community. Um. Another example is that. When we look at folks who are currently working, there's. So a lot of them are about to age out, to retire, so in the next ten years, fifty-one percent of all the water workers in the county, folks who work in our. Sanitation district or sewer or work in uh, with city water department or SoCal Creek Water District. Fifty-one percent of them will have reached or surpassed retirement age within the next ten years. Um, that's everyone from, you know, civil engineers to electricians to plumbers. Um. So. A lot of, I hear a lot of the time when we talk about housing, the the line, well, we don't have the infrastructure to add more housing. We don't have uh, you know, enough water, don't have enough space on the road for par- or parking. Uh, the reality is, we don't have enough housing for the infrastructure. We already have. Uh, and I think this is issue with, you know, the wat- water workers and the difficulty in hiring them. Uh, really demonstrates that, because we need, we need bodies, we need workers to maintain our infrastructure. And I'll address the traffic and the housing later on. Um, one more, just anecdotal um, story here. Uh, Shane and I, Shane is a First Eastern Analyst. Right there, Shane, thanks. Uh, we're meeting with. The Director of the Live Oak Family Resource Center the other day, and she was talking about how. Uh, she'd been taking applications for this new affordable housing that's coming online at fifteen hundred Capitola Road, it's where those two beautiful new clinics are. And you've probably seen some housing being built in the back, uh, there's fifty-seven units of affordable housing going in there. Much needed, and I was very excited about it. Um. The Director of the Resource Center said she has taken thousands of applicants. Said. He said she's, she thinks she must have signed up half the county. I said, what, you half the county? I mean, you're kidding, right? Like a hun- hundred or so applicants, right? She's like, no, thousands of applicants. Um, so the need is really extreme out there, um, I mean, it's essentially at this point, like, trying to win the lottery to get some of this house. So this is a great project, we need, we need a lot more. You know, a few more statistics here. Uh, I think this, the average monthly rent now in Santa Cruz County is two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, that was at the end of last year. Um. We have about two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine people in the county who have experienced homelessness. Uh, and you know, I know with some of the folks who are really visibly homeless, it's easy to think that um. You know, maybe they, or or tell ourselves the story that they came here from somewhere else, uh, and you know, that we just, they're just. On drugs and need to get lost and clean up their act. Um, there's also a lot of very uh. Of homelessness that's not visible, people who are, you know, living in a car or garage, uh, underhoused. Um, and it's important to remember that homelessness is is really a flow problem, people lose their housing every day because. Uh, you know, they have a disagreement with the roommate or a spouse, or they lose a job. Um. And then they have to go out and look for more housing, and. It depend, you know. And and the healthier the housing market is, the faster they can get rehoused. Uh, and when the housing market is really tight, when there's, when the average rent is two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and there's not a lot of units available, it's more likely that they are going to. Remain homeless longer, and so. I think that's where we do need to accept some responsibility for this. Uh, you know, over two thousand people that are, that are homeless in our community. As you can see, rents have been increasing really fast, fifteen percent between. Uh, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. As I pointed out already, over sixty, almost sixty percent of vendors in Santa Cruz County spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And uh, the median price of a home in Santa Cruz County, and it's now one point two million dollars, which is affordable for only sixteen sunny county residents. Okay, so what are we gonna do about this? The housing element, this is our strategy, really, um, for how we develop more housing in our community. Um, it is a part of our general plan. Um, which is, you know, the overarching guiding document for our county. And we are required to update it every eight years. Uh, it's a state requirement, so. Uh, the, this next housing element will take us from twenty twenty-three to twenty-two thirty-one. Um, and so a big part of what drives the housing element is what's called our. Arena allocation, or the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Uh, this is really a number that's determined through. A number of processes, but ultimately from, comes down from the state um, of how many units of housing we need to plan for, uh, plan to permit. And and hopefully build within the next eight years. So you can see in the last eight-year cycle, the fifth cycle, uh, our total arena number was one thousand three hundred and fourteen. And we actually have done a pretty darn good job, uh, we permitted. Nearly eighty percent of those units, one thousand forty-three units. Um, so we're, we're feeling pretty good about getting close to that goal, and might even um, get further still before the end of the year. Our six-cycle number, as you can see, is three hundred and fifty-three percent larger, four thousand six hundred and thirty-four units. Um, and that's because there is in fact an extreme need, and uh, this cycle, the state is. You know, really wants to do something about it, and is requiring us to plan for a lot more units. And as you can see, these are tiered by uh, income level. And you can see there's a weighting of uh, needing for for our community to plan for more very low and low income units. And that gets at, um, you know, this whole process that's called affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, and essentially looking at communities of opportunity where there are a lot of jobs. Uh, but um, that don't have enough housing, and so. Most of the, any community with high housing prices and um. A lot of jobs basically got a larger arena number when it comes to uh, the building very low and low-income housing. Um, so, you know, that takes a number of different shapes, right, um, whether it's. Units uh, that are affordable to low and moderate income that are rentals. Uh, we also are looking at opportunities to build farmworker housing, uh, teacher housing, in some cases on school campuses. Um, smaller units and family units, so one way we can try to. Ensure that housing is affordable, is affordable by design units, um, that are, you know, maybe studios or one bedrooms. Um. And of course, family units are also um. Tend to be more mixed income. Um, senior-specific housing, um, was, you know, actually, when it comes to senior housing, it's one area where we can. Um. You know, have fifty-five-plus requirements in terms of who can uh, live in certain areas. Um, and so that is, can uh, be considered designated for lower, very low um, income folks. Um, as well as housing for disabled, homeless, and those mental health receptionist issues. Now, in looking across our community at where this housing can go, um, there are considerable constraints, right, I mean, as. The recent atmospheric river storms pointed out, um, you know, there's. Some parts of our county that are are quite vulnerable. Um, whether they're low-lying areas right along the coast, um, or, you know, near some of the bigger creeks or rivers. Um, like, you know, Paharo River, uh, or uh, Coralitos Creek. Which, or SoCal Creek in the first district, we saw a lot of flooding. Um, so in planning for where this housing uh, is going, we want to make sure that it's, you know, will be resilient. In the future, with greater uncertainty in the climate. Uh, we also want to make sure that we build it in a place where it has easy access to uh. Infrastructure and services. And that doesn't just mean being able to walk out your door and go to the grocery store, it also means being able to hook up the new home to the sewer. Because in fact, there's, you know, pretty much most of the places in the Santa Cruz Mountains uh, do not have sewer service. Uh, in fact, we have one of the highest use, utilizations of septic systems. Uh, in our community, and uh, in fact, it's a little bit problematic. Because we have also one of the highest uses of private wells, so you really don't want septic, which is. Your sewer water would basically be reaching the ground close to well. Uh, and so as a result, we've have uh, new requirements to try to make it safer to put in septic, of course, it's much more expensive now to build those kinds of systems. Um, and so it does add cost to trying to build housing in the rural parts of uh, the county, so. Um, you know, really, the conclusion here is that we want to try to build this new housing in the urban area. Where there's close access to services, to jobs, and where it's going to be safe in the future. Um, I think I've kind of touched on various things on this slide. Um, of course, we want robust public involvement. Uh, is part of this process, and that's why we're having this meeting tonight, and there've been a number of other. Uh, meetings on the housing element, and why we have this uh, public review period. Yeah, I talked to, I think enough about the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Um, I guess one other thing I had mentioned is that we have, this is sort of, the housing element is the latest effort. Um, to uh, you know. Make these updates in our planning and uh, and documents and zoning code. Um, in order to build this housing, recently, we passed the Sustainability Update, uh, which also accomplished uh, some of, some of these things as well. Uh, including defining some new denser residential zoning standards. So, um, if you look through the housing element, um, you'll see, you know, a lot of the kind of background information that I discussed already. Um, you'll also see a proposed list of new programs. Uh, basically, these are different policies that the county will pursue in order to make it easier to build housing. Um, or in order in some, some cases to build denser housing. Um, and, you know, just general, generally streamline the process, um, so that, so. We can build housing faster. Um, so you can see this includes things like buy right, it's gonna sound probably a little bit technical, but. Buy right overlay zone, site consolidation bonus, rezone opportunity sites. Update multifamily development standards, proactive code enforcement for vacation rentals. Uh, because vacation rentals can take a unit of housing of other by, wise to use as a full. Full. Full-term or or full-time rental. Advocate for state limits on renter application fees to try to make it easier for people to find new housing. Uh, explore options for increasing supply and awareness of affordable. Uh, accessible housing for people with disabilities. Explore requiring all new housing built in the county to be electric. For formation of a CDBG urban county with local cities. Uh, again, this is just a partial list, um, if you look through the housing element, there's a full list of things there, um, you know. I've really trying to, tried to be proactive myself in terms of bringing new housing policies to the table, some of them. Uh, are included in the housing element, some of them we've already done, things like permitting tiny homes. Um, or uh, becoming a pro-housing designated county. Uh, which basically says that we're going to adopt enough of these types of policies to be more streamlined. Um. Also, I also brought forward a. Uh, update to the Tenant Protections Ordinance this year. Um, so it's. It's a never-ending process, uh, and there's, it's a lot of pieces to it, um. The housing element does take probably the most comprehensive look at what we can do from a policy perspective. To continue to make it easier to get housing. Um, yeah, I talked a little bit about what affirmatively furthering fair housing and fair housing analysis means. Um, the housing element does do a kind of a deep dive into this. Um, you know, basically why we need to build housing and uh, you know, more opportunity zones where the price of housing tends to be higher. Um, in order to give folks more access to opportunity. Um. Because there's been a history of segregation in the region. Um. And, you know, goals of greater integration and segregation. Uh, one. Anecdote I'll share here, uh, is when we were looking, um, is that. And I think even though the majority of. Uh, African-Americans in Santa Cruz County actually have a higher level degree. Being a college degree or even a master's degree. Um. They represent less than one percent of home homeowners. Uh, or less than one percent of of all, all of them in the county own homes, so. Um, some pretty amazing and stark contrast to uh, how some of the stuff are, uh, is. Actually manifests, and so, um, that's why it is important to. Include these goals in the housing element. Okay, I mentioned robust public engagement, we're doing that now, um, there have also been a few other parts uh, to this process. Before this, um, there was a community meeting at Aptos Villas Park. A virtual meeting on May thirty-first. Um, and then there is one more public meeting, June twenty-eighth. Uh, which is what, next Wednesday, five thirty P M at the Watsonville Civic Plaza. You can also. I. Stephanie, is this still online, and are you, is this part of the comments that you're accepting?
Yeah, absolutely, we're gonna keep it up there for a while, um, it's a really. Fun tool that um, um. Uh, puts a user through choices that you have to make on where we can accommodate more housing. Um, and kind of forces you to make some decisions until that red bar at the top. Each, each choice you make that those numbers change until you've. Finally are able to get the right combination of accommodating enough housing, and then. Um, congratulations, you get a housing plan, there's multiple ways to comment in this tool along the way. Um, and you can submit um, even ideas for other sites as well, so we really encourage folks to. Um, get in there, it kind of makes it a little bit more. Um, fun and and bring some of the choices home as well.
Great, thanks, thanks, uh, and so you got the URL here, you can also find it really easily if you just search Santa Cruz County Housing Element. Got a whole page there with all the project documents, and then this is the interactive housing plan tool. Um, where you can kind of step through the different parts of the county. Uh, where we could potentially add housing and, um, you know, share how many you think should be added in this particular location. Um, just having this map up, though, is a good opportunity, I mean, you'll see these different areas, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Um, I mean, as you can see, most of these are Live Oaks, SoCal, Aptos, a little bit in Amesti and Felton. Um, but the reasons that these areas are highlighted is, first of all, um, you know, we're not, as I said, we're not considering putting a ton of units in the. On uh, the the rural area outside of where sewer and water service are accessible, so that, of course, removes a a large portion of our county. Then, the city of Santa Cruz, the city of Capitola, city of Watsonville, the city of Scotts Valley are all going through their own process to add housing units. As well, in fact, I think the city of Santa Cruz has about three thousand four hundred or so units they need to. Uh, include in their, their update, Capitola's about twelve hundred, Scotts Valley sixteen hundred, uh, Watsonville two thousand something, so. Um, really, when we talk about this process, it's for the unincorporated area of the county, that's the part that the county government. Is directly responsible for with our general plan. What our. So, it's not that Santa Cruz City is not a good place to have housing, it's just they have uh, their own process. Okay, um, so then, of course, uh, another, or sort of the last piece of the. Housing element is going through an inventory of all the sites in the county. Uh, where more housing could be added. And um. We're sort of planning for not only an arena number, but also looking at how, you know, a sort of a buffer, since some of these may or may not work out. Uh, an additional ten percent from, you know, the the minimum requirement we're getting from the state. Um. And first, we went through and looked at basically our existing inventory, that's all the parcels that are vacant or underutilized, where new housing could be built. Um, and so actually, just doing that, uh, we're able to get. You know, a fair number of units, we also look at things like um, capacity to build ADUs. Um. And uh, and utilize some, some new state laws uh, to add housing. So after we looked at existing inventory, we still had this nine hundred and fifty-two uh, unit. Deficit that we had to make up, uh, and so that's where some of the rezonings come into play. Um. Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna pass this for now. Um, I guess what I'd say is, say here is that basically, if you look in the housing element, we've identified uh, two thousand one hundred, uh, potential parcels that could accommodate. Two thousand one hundred and ninety-one units. Um, of additional housing, so um. You know, again, to have some buffer between what's absolutely required and uh, what could be built. So then, um, the, there is an appendix in the housing element, uh, which shows the actual sites inventory map. Um, and. It shows basically the three categories I just mentioned. So, uh, the blue parcel shown here are uh, underutilized parcels that we've identified that add housing. The pink parcels are vacant. Parcels that could add more housing, and the yellow parcels uh, are sites that we've identified could be rezoned. Um, again, you can see here the urban services lines, this blue line. Uh, and really, all the parcels are within that, because outside of there, you can't get sewer service or water service. And I'm happy to. Go through on the, on the site, um, and show you. go through on the on the site and show you where you can access this part of the document. So you can take a closer look at that if you want. I'll take questions here, let's see, in a minute. The timeline is we've actually, we've got to get this housing element done by the end of the year. You might have heard some of the horror stories and what happens if we don't in places like Santa Monica. Basically, the state's penalty is something called, among other things, the builder's remedy, which means that a developer can apply and as long as it includes a certain amount of affordable housing in the proposed project, it's just, it's approved. We can't do anything about it. So we essentially lose our ability to do our own local land use planning if we don't have a certified housing element in place. So that's why we really want to get this certified by the end of the year. So that we maintain control. So we are what here, release draft housing element partway into Q three. So the draft has been published. It's, I guess it will be out for in more than thirty days. Available till July eleventh. And then we will submit the housing element to the the state in order to review it and give us some feedback on whether or not they think it meets their requirements. Then it will come back to us and will the county will revise the housing element to, you know, fix anything that the state thinks that we missed. Or make sure it's achievable. We will update our environmental impact report to basically describe how adding all this housing will impact the environment in our area. And then we'll have public meetings both at the Planning Commission as well as the Board of Supervisors throughout this time. Really late Q three and Q four. Those will all be public hearings that will be open for public comment and feedback. And then the Board of Supervisors will ultimately adopt the housing element at the end of this year and will submit it to HCD. Right before the deadline. That's the plan. As I said, you can get involved online. Happy to walk through some of those resources. There is also, if you want to see some stuff in person, an open house in Watsonville next week. Before I take questions, I want to address probably like the two most questions I always hear about, you know, adding housing. The first is, well, where where where's everyone gonna park? And where all the cars gonna go? So the short answer is, we're really trying, and this is part of planning for this housing in the urban area. Trying to make this transit-oriented development or transit-focused housing where people will have alternatives like walking, biking, or taking transit to their destination. And I'm actually on the Metro Board, and there's a lot of really exciting things we're doing with Metro right now to improve the bus service, which I think you should know about. First of all, we launched the youth ride free program, which means that any student eighteen or or younger, if you're, you know, still in high school or, you know, down elementary school, can just show their school ID and get on the bus for free. And we've already seen youth ridership double just in the couple of months that that's been available. We have gotten some really amazing state grants. And have twenty-nine hydrogen buses on order and a new hydrogen fueling station for those buses funded that we're planning for. The reason we do also have, I think, four hy- four electric buses already, another five on order. But the reason there's a little bit of a preference for hydrogen here is they can go longer, they can provide more service before we fueling. Particularly with routes like Watsonville to Santa Cruz or Highway seventeen over the hill. That's that's really important. If you drive Highway one, I'm sure you've noticed that we're starting to make improvements there. What's being added is an auxiliary lane and bus on shoulder lane. And so that will improve traffic or traffic flow for anyone using the highway, but in particular, the bus will have a dedicated section between the exit and the next next on-ramp. Where it'll be able to get a little bit of a jump on the rest of traffic. And we're looking at ways to improve that dedicated bus facility on the highway in the future. It'll ultimately go all the way to Freedom Boulevard. Well, you'll also see break ground this year, a signal priority project for the bus on SoCal Drive, which means the buses, we're putting in twenty-two lights. Those lights will be able to talk to the bus and will be able to turn green when the bus is coming or or turn green faster if the bus is waiting. We're also updating a lot of the bus stops along SoCal Drive so that they're just, you know, whether more of them will be covered, they'll have updated information, real-time information, your bus coming in the next three minutes. We've undertaken the Reimagine Metro process, which is looking at how we can reshape the routes for Metro and try to get fifteen-minute headways, which means a bus coming every fifteen minutes on three core routes through through the main part of town. That could mean pulling buses away from some of the lesser-used areas. But really, studies show that people really start riding the bus when it comes over fifteen minutes or less, because that means their travel time is less, they're waiting for the bus last. It takes less time to transfer between one bus and the next one. So that's the goal, is to get more fifteen-minute headways. It could require more funding. And I think that you know, Metro ultimately to provide the level of service our community needs to support the housing that our community needs, we will probably have to look at funding Metro to a greater extent. The other question I get all the time, of course, is what about the water? You know, we, where, how are all these people gonna be able to turn on their cap, take a shower? And get water? So first off, well, you probably have seen this infrastructure project happening around town, most notably along SoCal Drive, also on places like SoCal Wolf Road. But the Pure Water SoCal Project is being built by the Sheriff's Center. You can see it from the highway going in there. This is a recycled water facility that is the reason the SoCal Drive has been torn up is that we're taking a pipe from the wastewater treatment facility in Neri Lagoon in Santa Cruz, piping it over to this location off of Shannon Clear and SoCal Avenue, treating that water many times over advanced purification. And then taking it to some injection wells and putting it in the aquifer for storage as well as for dilution with the natural water supply that's stored in the aquifers. So that will provide a more resilient water supply during times of drought. Also, the city of Santa Cruz Wire Department and SoCal Creek Water District have been working together. They've sorted out a lot of the water rights issues that and now that those are resolved, are able to transfer water more seamlessly between city and district. And that's important because Santa Cruz has all of the streams of river water, right? They get essentially all of their water, their vast majority of it, over ninety-five percent from North Coast Creeks and the San Lorenzo River. But they don't have anywhere to put it during winter events. SoCal Creek gets all their water from from wells and has this giant aquifer, but all the wells have reduced the water in the aquifer and we're seeing seawater intrusion. But essentially, we have this giant storage capacity in the mid-county aquifer. And so now that the two districts are working to get to, the two water agencies are working together. They've successfully demonstrated that they can inject water from Santa Cruz into the SoCal Aquifer and you would use it as a giant storage basin that we can then pump it back out and reuse it. If it's not, it's not leaking, we're able to recover most of what's injected. And they're moving towards production level injection wells this this year. So that's exciting. We're gonna be using the resources we have better. And finally, you know, when we talk about this mostly multi-family housing that would be built, it is really substantially lower water use by design than a lot of the existing single-family housing stock. You know, these new units would not, by and large, have lawns to irrigate or huge gardens. Of course, the requirements around low-flow fixtures have changed dramatically since the eighties when we built a lot of the current housing stock to today. And so just by by design, by virtue of the fact that they're you know, apartment units as opposed to single-family homes, they will use substantially less water. So you know, even the university has demonstrated with, you know, these kind of basic techniques that they have been able to substantially increase, of course, the number of students while still reducing the amount of water that they use up there. So it is, it is possible. That is all the information I have for you. As far as slides, happy to take questions now. And first, we also have Stephanie here, who is our expert on this matter, so.
I have a question in the chat I'd like to read.
Okay, before we get to that, just want everyone to note, so if you have a question, go ahead and click the reactions button at the bottom of the screen, it's a little smiley face with a plus, and click raise hand and then we'll call on folks in order to put your raise.
All right. Gail wrote in while you were going through your slides and she had a comment on one of the slides. I'm not exactly sure which one, but it says, why do we continue to build the most expensive houses when you've just showed us that the real need is in the low and very low brackets?
So I assume you mean that the homes that are built when they go on they're sold at market rate are selling for, you know, very high amounts, you know, one point two, one point five million dollars. And that's because it really is going to take collaboration between the public sector and the private sector to build this housing. The county is not a housing developer. We occasionally are able to pull some state money, work with an affordable housing developer like Mid Penn or Eden Housing and get an affordable housing project built. Such as the one on Capitola Road that I mentioned. As I also mentioned, those fifty-seven units are not nearly enough, and those opportunities are few and far between. So actually, the majority of affordable housing that we have built in the low and very low income categories in the last RMA cycle were built by the private sector. Either through the fifteen percent requirement that we have for for new developments built by by anyone. Or through affordable by-design units like ADUs, which we've done a market analysis on and seen that I can't remember exactly the number, but you know, we've looked at how many, what percentage of ADUs are renting and are affordable for those low and very low income categories. And so when we count ADUs towards the future numbers in Arena, that's kind of the math we're using to back it up. But then, you know, those ADUs almost entirely have been built by individual homeowners, by the private sector. Right? The county's not going out and paying to install ADUs places. So yes, the the housing that you're seeing is very expensive because we're building still relatively speaking, very little of it. And so the demand is very high, the supply is low, cost is high. But, you know, let's not overlook that that process is also building some affordable housing, not nearly enough. But it is building some. You know, two new Measure J units are going on sale at the project on SoCal Drive, the dwellings that you've seen for sale were going up. And those are for sale for about five hundred thousand dollars apiece. Really, you know, that's that is affordable for our community.
Yeah, and Manu, if I could maybe add, part of the reason for that is our overabundance of single-family zoning, right? That's where the single-family homes are built. And what we're talking about here is having more multi-family and what they call it, mid, missing middle housing, so that those are the types of units that are going to be more affordable to people. And so therefore, the use of our, we have a new high-density zoning district called Residential Flex and getting more opportunities for a little bit higher density and multi-family is really key to making sure that we can accommodate more low and very low income households. So things are intricately tied tied together. So I just wanted to kind of make that that extra point.
That's a good one. And I'll just finish by saying that, are we gonna look for more opportunities to build, you know, public housing, whether it's housing on county properties? Absolutely. We're actively looking for opportunities to public-private partnerships on all of the county's largest parcels right now. You know, but ultimately, the money to build public housing projects takes public money. So it would take, I mean, things like the mayor in Santa Cruz is talking about, in terms of the new parcel tax for housing. Or, you know, a new sales tax or transfer tax on on real estate. It will take some form to capture that money and put it towards public subsidized housing. So in absence of that, we're trying to look at any ways that we can help the market get there as well. And, you know, some people just say, we'll require it all to be affordable. But then it can't get built, because, I mean, then it doesn't pencil out for a developer to build it and they simply won't build anything. You know, ultimately, that would be a new requirement on housing, and we already have so many requirements in terms of our environmental laws, our process, that that's the big reason why housing is so expensive. I did not see. Next, I have Bill Cook and then Ellen.
Hi, Manu.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. An element that I, that that may, that I believe is, has some some plays red-tagged units in the city of Santa Cruz, that's what I'm mostly familiar with. We have between three and four hundred units that are going through that process at this time. And historically, we've taken a very punitive approach to to this 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 part of the housing element. And it came to my attention that in Bakersfield, they they have they have functionally zero homeless now. They got it down to three individuals. And part of the way that they did that was making funds available to owners of illegal units to do the repairs and and to take away the additionally, to take away the risk to the landlord of 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 housing any particular individual effectively financially indemnifying them from for risk. So I just wondered if if the Bakersfield model was in your orbit and and if if we're taking any steps to to make our our code enforcement less punitive.
Stephanie, do you want to address that at all? You're still on mute.
Thank you. That's a good comment. We'll look into the Bakersfield program a little bit. One, one thing that we did do a while ago was to modify our code for non-conforming uses, so you can kind of maintain those uses a lot a lot longer. You can get permits for them. We're we're much more concerned about life safety issues when it comes to red tagging properties. And we've also had a program that's called Safe Structures, where we really encourage people who've built illegally over time to come in, get permits, up upgrade their units to accommodate a basic life safety checklist. And that way, get the units to be legalized. So we have taken some steps to try to try to help with that, but it's Try to help with that, but it's um red tagging is not a major consideration for. Our housing supply in in general. It's a, it's a much bigger issue than than just that.
Right, that's a good point. So uh great, thanks for bringing it up, Bill, and we'll definitely. Um, as you can see, we've got some programs that kind of touch on this and we'll look at opportunities to improve it. I think as Stephanie pointed out, that that's kind of like a preventing a loss of housing units and that housing element is really requiring us to look at. Adding housing units. So that's why it's not discussed as much in the housing element itself, but uh yeah, we'll look at. At other policy options related to that. Thanks. Ellen.
I'm on it. Nice to see you.
You too.
Um, I actually live in the Aptos area and I missed Zach's meeting a couple of weeks ago, so. I thank you for just letting me sit on this um so I could learn the fundamentals of the plan. I appreciate it. Um, I did actually um review the uh appendices prior to this meeting. So I could get familiar with what the proposed sites um look like and where they're located. And my, my main question is, how were the actual proposed sites chosen? So, for example, I hear and understood that um hopefully they will be around public transportation. But was there um an algorithm written that looked at the various factors? To try to really figure out um optimally for the county. Uh, where the sites could best be? So can you give me a little bit more insight into how the sites, the proposed sites were chosen?
Um, yeah, the. The state requires actually an in-depth analysis um that. Uh, mixture restrictions look at a variety of of factors. Uh, as Manu was was suggesting, our focus has really been on infill, right? So we're looking at properties that are in our urban areas already. Um, the county has an. Uh, I'm sure most of you know, an urban services line uh that comes out of Measure J from nineteen seventy-eight. Um, where we really, we really try to hold our urban level development to the urban services line. Um, and a little bit in the rural uh services line, but. Um, those areas like the towns along Highway nine don't really have the water and sewer capacity. Um, so it's really important that we're not looking to develop. Um, or accommodate new housing um in. Uh, rural rural areas where there's all kinds of constraints, both environmental um and. Um, uh, transportation and service constraints. Um, we're not trying to rezone a lot of agricultural land, right, that we um that is is very. Uh, precious for our community. Um, we're not trying to reduce our environmental standards. Um, or allow housing in um in environmentally sensitive areas. So there's a lot of constraints to to work within. Um, we did want to focus on uh infill development in areas where there is access to to transit. And there is access to schools and libraries um and other um services. Um, so that's a large part of what we looked at. We looked at the capacity. Um, under our existing zoning and as Manu kind of pointed out, and then we figured out what the. Uh, deficit was, and then we look at where um we might need to rezone. So. Um, there's a couple of different types of housing. Um, when you look at the parcels in the inventory. Um, one is that the parcels might be underutilized. We're not, we're not trying to change zoning. It's just that those parcels actually have the capacity. And are existing zoning to accommodate more units. Um, and then there are the areas that we're looking to to rezone. Um, and and basically, um, it follows kind of considerations that I just just mentioned. Um, there are additional considerations um related to um affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, it really means you need to start spreading out where your affordable units are going to go. You can't overload areas that have historically accommodated more low-income housing. Um, you need to to um even out those uh historical patterns by um. By putting housing in those areas that are a little bit more high resource. Um, so there's so many factors that go into it, but that gives you a little bit of an of an overview of it.
So I I like the idea. I appreciate the idea of spreading the housing out throughout the county. I think that makes a lot of sense um rather than, you know, building this mega center. Where we have too many units. Um, uh, so I like the idea of of spreading it out. I just would hope that perhaps you might take a second look at some of the areas. Um, where I I understand you can't go into the Aggie areas, but for example, in Carly Tills or something, just as an example. Um, there's quite a bit of of land and it would just seem to me that. We would try to err to not build too much housing in one place. So we've got this glut of of people and traffic and water issues, but rather. We distributed it out a little bit more um into the areas that aren't as well-developed. I guess is my input and I'll, uh, you know, I will write that in a comment, but. Um, just wanted to let you know that that was my thinking, but but appreciate spreading it out and and the need for this. So thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. And I mean, Stephanie, the the ADU calculation, right? I mean, that's for example, is one thing that is county or wide, right? So I think roughly ten percent of uh the number of our housing element. Goal is is adding new ADUs and those are, you know, obviously eligible countywide.
Yeah, there, there are many um types of units that are not mapped out in those maps. We make some growth assumptions for the eight-year period. We don't try to pick which parcels are going to build an ADU, for instance. Um, I think the forecast was for about, um, want to say it's maybe four hundred and fifty ADUs. For the eight-year period. Um, and so there's a couple of different types of uh housing where we do more of that forecasting. Than really trying to prove which parcel uh in in particular that something is going to go on. Um, same for development in rural areas. Um, we look at our past history of how much has developed in rural areas, and then we forecasted out for the eight-year period to to. Um, show that yes, there will be some um single-family development in our rural areas. I think it's fairly limited. Maybe we had eighty or so over the eight-year. Um, not very, not very much at at all. Um, uh, so there are other forecasting considerations that that go into it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Darius, go ahead.
So how is the Coastal Commission in? It, um, friend or foe? Cause um, you know, I looked at building um adding on or building. Additional units at my property at Six Six Avenue and Dolores, which is in the Coastal Commission, coastal zone, of course. And you've got twenty-eight foot height limits and so forth. Now, I forgot, is that a county restriction or is the Coastal Commission come and? Throw some additional limitations?
Um, the Coastal Commission can make it a little um. Bit more difficult. Um, it's an extra layer of permitting that one has to go through. Um, earlier, Manu mentioned the sustainability update. We actually looked at a lot of the residential um. Regulations for our zoning um and looked to where. Uh, we could make adjustments to height, setback, uh floor area ratio, a a few things. Um, and and density ranges as well. Um, so so that we can make more efficient use of our urban lands. So some things are are have been adjusted. Um, ironically, we're, we are waiting for those regulations. To also get through the Coastal Commission before they fully go into effect. Um, but you know, it's a little bit of a challenge. In the coastal zone, there are additional considerations and. Um, one of them is the coastal commission's priority on visitor-serving commercial. Um, they value that higher than residential. Um, so it's made it kind of difficult to get a lot of. New residential development and mixed use um in, but we are, we are slowly chipping a a way. At at that to to try to open up the possibilities a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you. Darius, um, Steve S.
Yeah, am I there?
Yeah, we hear you now.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, uh, so say if you're zoned, you know, you get rezoned for a hundred and fifty units. From R one six. Um, so fifteen percent of that's going to have to be the ultra-low and the whole breakdown as far as the uh. Breakdown of ultra-low and standard housing. Um, or how's that going to work? Or is it like you can put all affordable housing in that whole complex of a hundred and fifty units that? You know, would be zoned?
Um, yeah, good question. New developments don't need to meet each of those. Uh, income levels that you saw in the table for the the Rena. Uh, we do have inclusionary housing requirements for larger developments. So if you do a regular development, you have to do more like fifteen percent. Um, uh, affordable units in order to meet those requirements. Um, and really, the state has provided uh more of a carrot to to providing. Um, lower-income units in the form of density bonuses. So if you provide, the developer provides affordable units. And they can go a little bit higher on their density calculations, depending on how many they. Um, they provide. Um, so if a developer were to come in and wants to do. All affordable housing or a good percentage of affordable housing, it really does help with the density that could be. That could be developed on a particular parcel.
So wouldn't you be at the whim of the developer then as far as the price that they would give you for a piece of property? As opposed to like, if you can put in the R one six. You could sell the places, you know, for the most part at a better value. And probably get a better uh profit margin, I would imagine, since you're dealing with a, you know, population that's. You know, going to have money that wants to live here. And so if you max out the number of. Um, higher-end houses, you probably will be more apt to buy a piece of property and develop it, even though you got to. Meet the criteria of the uh lower-density houses. And uh it just seems that you're at the whim of. The uh economy and what the state has for money. If the state doesn't give you two cents, then it's kind of like your property isn't worth two cents either. So it's kind of like, that's kind of robbery on the public's part. For somebody that, you know, happens to have a piece of property, it would take my incentive away of developing anything. Um, and so you guys would be stuck with a empty piece of property and, you know, it's like, it seems that um. There needs to be a fair shake for the property owners. And uh everybody thinks, yeah, we need more housing. We do need more housing, but back in the sixties and seventies, there was people. They were, you know, wanting no roads, no more houses, no more of this, no more, you know, population. And now we got what we got. And it's like, I think we should bring those people to task and make them cough up the money for, you know. These people that are now suffering because, you know, the person that has managed to hang on to property. And keep the natural uh appearance and aesthetics of the county the way it is. And now it's like bam, you gotta put in a four or five-story, you know, concrete building. And you can go look on SoCal Drive by Monterey Avenue and look at that beautiful project they just put in there. That they stuffed fifteen units into on one acre or something like that. And it looks like chicken, it actually looks like a mushroom factory. So I don't know, I just getting ticked off with this stuff and it just, you know. These meetings, anyway, I'm I'm going to go before I say something I shouldn't. Goodbye.
Thank you for your comments, Steve. Jean and Michael. Yeah, I hear you now.
All right, uh, two things. Um, first of all, uh. Uh, I came to Santa Cruz in nineteen seventy-nine and one of the first things I did was attend a board of supervisors meeting, my very first. And stood up during uh oral communications and thanked the county for Measure J. Um, so Steve, sorry about that, and I have no guilt at all in terms of saying. Uh, let's go slow and let's think about what we're doing. Because there is a natural environment here that matters as much as we matter. And we are a function of the health of that natural environment. I have a question, Manu, and um uh maybe Stephanie. Uh, I understand that the uh goal in identifying parcels where we want to build. Uh, or at least um provide for the building, the developers have to build it, the county doesn't build it. Um, that you want it to be uh in transportation corridors. But I was curious about now that Kaiser Permanente has decided not to um go forward with its project. On the uh, I call it the Frontage Road. Um, that that was originally zoned, my understanding. Uh, for north of the, there's a uh Beachcomber Mobile Home Park there, that was zoned for housing. And I think it was zoned, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, specifically to try and get. Um, uh, moderate or to low housing. Are we, and the problem, of course, is that one of the problems with Kaiser Permanente is that we said, well, there's not even bus service there. So that's a bad idea. But I'm wondering if in the planning, it might not be a good idea to take a look at that. Property again, add those, add that area and maybe provide for um a combination. Much like fifteen hundred Capitola Road, so that you have some small commercial. So that people can literally walk to it. And I I'm wondering if if. Uh, when you made the first uh cut on this, we still had Kaiser Permanente. I'm wondering if you're taking another look at that. So that's my question.
Thank you. Um, so that site is currently zoned for twenty units per acre. Of residential development. Part of the proposal that um was included. Would have been to rezone it to commercial. Um, because that was a site that was. Um, designated for, at the time, our highest density at twenty units per acre. Um, and allows a hundred units on it. Um, and was done for a formal, a former cycle. Um, we're just leaving that as is. We're not proposing to. Um, to make a change one way or the other. Those units are associated with the previous cycle, actually two cycles ago. Um, and will will remain just as as they are. And there's a few properties like that. That uh were previously zoned for higher density that have not developed. Um, and that will, they will, they'll remain as they are. As they're zoned.
As they're currently sound, right? And I mean, I will point out, Jean, you mentioned the access to transit. Um, I mean, in fact, the site is not horribly far from. horribly far from transit. Uh, with the new bike and pedestrian bridge that's being built across the highway, uh, that side is roughly half a mile uh, so which is to SoCal Drive, which would be a high-frequency transit stop. Thank you. Good question. Um, since you mentioned, we're talking about sites that um were zoned in the past and have not been included for rezoning uh in this current housing element. I do have a question here from Gabby Erlock, who uh wants to understand the zoning around uh the Erlock-Nye property. She asks, why were the R combining sites, Erlock-Nye, not included to be rezoned to residential flex or residential urban high in the current housing element? Uh, I understand that the desire to penalize the sites that have been on more than two housing element cycles. However, it does not take into account the circumstances of the water not having been available or having a million-dollar-plus in WDO fees. Would you reconsider including the Erlock site, which is five-point-one acres, uh, planning unit development to be rezoned to residential flex? And then additionally, would you reconsider including the other Erlock Cunesson site, nine-plus acres to or within the Urban Services line that we showed on the Interactive Housing Plan map as residential flex or residential urban high? It is one hundred feet to the farm park, three hundred and fifty feet to other transportation, and one point three miles to Cabrera College.
Um, thank you. We 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 really tried to kind of create a mix of zoning opportunities and because um those sites were already zoned for twenty units per acre and and can actually go higher with the density bonus. Um, we left them as is, but you know, it's interesting to consider, um, you know, we've put out this draft. It's an early draft. Uh, hasn't been to the uh Board of Supervisors yet. It's a requirement of the state that that we have a draft out um uh in the public before sending the element to the state for their initial review. And I I will, I will say that the inventory will change um as we go through that state review. And I imagine as we go through the public process um here with, you know, hearings and um it's it's uh so liable to change. It's um refreshing to consider that those um the the those properties may, uh, property owners may be interested in higher density. Um, we should have a further discussion about that and see what the need may be as the inventory uh changes here in the next couple of months.
Great. Yeah. So I think the answer is Gabby. Uh, it's happy to consider. And if you want to reach out to uh Stephanie in the Planning Department or my office, and I can connect you guys. Um, it's a discussion worth having. So thanks for attending tonight. Thanks for asking a question. All right, I've got one more question here uh in the chat from Alex Barton on timelines on the rezonings in the housing element. Uh, he says he believes some of the goals specify the requisite rezones and code changes, height, et cetera, that need to go through board and also Coastal Commission uh deadlines far in the future, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. If I remember, that's almost halfway through the planning period. What can you say about how planning and and Board Supervisors will expedite the prescribed changes and the process? Will there be a need to, well, there will, there need to be a blanket EIR to cover and mass rezones required as shown in the map? Also, the identified underutilized and vacant provide uh any particular streamlining benefit with development compared to non-colored sites?
There's a lot of questions in that one. Um, hello to Alex. Uh, so the the sustainability update changed a lot of our zoning regulations. I know Alex is well aware. Um, the board passed those in December and they are now uh at the Coastal Commission and we we are working with the Coastal Commission staff to try to get those adopted by the end of the year. Um, so the regulation should be, uh, the residential regulations should be adjusted by the end of the year. Uh, fingers crossed on on that because I think it'll be really helpful. Um, the state, if if you're in compliance with your housing element, the state gives you three years to uh to do the rezonings. Um, we would intend to do them next year. They would be on the Planning Departments or Planning Division's work program um as immediate follow, follow-up so that those opportunities can be opened up. Um, and in terms of the uh environmental impact report, the, we just completed a great environmental impact report for the sustainability update work. And actually, the forecasting that we did for that EIR was very close to what uh we have to accommodate in the uh in the new Rena. Um, the the methodology for the inventory uh kind of forces you to be more conservative. Um, so we do have to do some rezoning, but we'll be able to prepare an addendum to the environmental impact report because it's so new and um up to date. Uh, we'll be able to prepare an addendum for um uh for this housing element update. I think I captured all the questions in there, but if I didn't, I'm happy to get to get to them. Thanks.
Thanks. All right. I don't see any other questions in my chat uh or uh with people with their hand raised. Christina, do you have anything else?
No, there's no other uh messages that have come to me.
Okay, then I'll just take one minute before we close to make sure you guys all can find your way to the housing element site, in case you want to do some more research on this.
Jamie did put some of the links in the chat, too.
Great, great. Um, I will just show this anyway, so people can um see. So if you just Google Santa Cruz County housing elements, the first link that pops up here, um, you've got it's this nice button, which will take you to all the housing element documents. Uh, this is the how interactive housing plan tool uh that we mentioned during the presentation here that you can try out. Uh, and then within the housing element documents, you've got the complete document, which talk goes through and the background um and the policies. I mean, if you're looking specifically for the maps and the housing inventory, it's this stuff down here, the uh housing inventory map. Um, and actually, well, this is loading. Um, I know one question that came up, I think they're in the Planning Commission meeting, Stephanie, is you've got the site inventory, which is the kind of list view of all these sites and then um like this and talks about, you know, whether it's considered um, you know, vacant or supposed for rezoning. And then you've got the map view here. Is there a easier, how do you navigate between this if you see something? Because you have the the housing site APNs here. Um, is the only way to do it through the GIS or is there an easier way to figure out one, you know, between? So if I see, you know, this parcel here and want to see what the proposal is, or I mean, it's just underutilized, maybe there's not one.
Yeah, 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 thanks, Manu. Um, the way it is now, you do kind of have to flip back and forth. And if you have, um, you know, the county has a great GIS um program that's available where you can find any, look up any uh assessors um parcel um by its APN or by uh address or even by zooming into the map to get to whatever parcel you want. So um, right now, uh, that would be the best way. But we did hear the Planning Commission say they felt like it was too confusing, the way we had the map set up, um particularly the rezones. Um, so we are working on another series of maps to show um zoom in on the rezones a little bit better and show those particular APNs so that you can kind of toggle it with the list a little bit easier and you're not just kind of guessing in the area. Um, uh, so we are, we are, we are working on on that. Um, and and what I would say is that when you're looking at the inventory, the areas that, you know, it's by parcel. Um, and so the whole parcel gets highlighted. Um, and when you look at the blue parcels or the purple parcels, those are just existing conditions now. They're they're vacant or underutilized. Um, there could be housing there. The zoning is appropriate for more housing, but it doesn't mean we're rezoning. It's just that you could do housing there and we're showing the state, hey, this is part of our capacity. Housing could go there. It's a good site for various reasons. The the yellow are actually where potential rezones are. Um, and I will say that uh several of the rezones in this district are really, it's uh really more about, it's small-scale, more about missing, missing middle housing. Um, we call them the SB ten rezones. Um, it uh state law allows uh jurisdiction to rezone property and infill residential property for up to ten units. It's a great way to build in a little bit more of that missing middle housing that I talked about um earlier. Um, uh, so when you look at this map, you know, all the purple and blue are no change at all. Is, it's just the yellow that that we're proposing a change on.
Most of the smaller parcels then would be the towns.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So there's uh the rezones countywide are seventy-five parcels. Um, forty-four of them are the SB ten, the the infill, missing middle. Um, and that leaves um thirty-four. My math is off at at night. Um, parcels that are actual rezoning where we, you know, it's a, it's a bigger parcel. Um, and there's real potential there for housing. And I will say there's a couple of key sites that are shown on the map um where uh either for agriculture, for agricultural housing um or maybe it's only a portion of a larger site that might actually be de-developed. And so if there are questions, I encourage people to go to the website. Um, and you can uh access, see that twenty twenty-three housing element web um uh email address that's highlighted there in the first, yep. Um, that'll, that's our address for staff and and you can ask questions there as well as make comments. And we're happy to to help clarify and um and uh even though it says public review draft is uh due by July eleventh, there will still be opportunities for input. Um, we're going to be visiting the Planning Commission, the Housing Advisory Commission, uh, the Board of Supervisor for study sessions before we go into um public hearings. So even though it says July eleventh, it's not, it's not really over until it's over. Um, uh, and so that's just the um comment period for this initial draft before it goes off to the state and we start revisions again. So very much a work in progress. Expect a a little bit of change along along the way.
Great. Thank you. Um, and I do have have one last question, which is you define how access to transportation, I think specifically maybe transit is determined. What's the criteria that determines a positive uh determination for access to public transit? I know.
Well, that's kind of hard to answer exactly, but we do look, um, we know where the existing metro routes are. Um, and uh but but we also get to consider what might happen in the future because don't forget the housing element is an eight-year, is an eight-year plan. And actually, when we look at at the general plan as a whole, it's a twenty-year plan. Um, so we, you know, we do consider where future housing, um, excuse me, future transit stops might might be as as well. So it's not only what's out there now, but it's what might come online, um, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for uh learning out on housing with us tonight and Evan, if you have further questions, you can use the email in the chat there, twenty twenty-three housing element at santacruzcounty.us.
And I just wanted to mention that um July, there won't be a town hall, but in August, um, we're hoping to host our next town hall at the um Live Oak Library exhibit is ready. And you can
Simcon Center. Yes.
Yes, yes. Um, you can always go to the First District website to um see when and where our next meeting is, as also we can see our newsletters and office hours.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.